The call of meeting for order is six thirty P M on Monday, January the tenth. And this is the committee of the whole meeting for the township of Edersburg Cardinal Administration Finance. And just ask council to bear with me tonight. I can't see what I'm doing. I lost my glasses and the ones I'm using are really not good. But I'll try to get through this. Uh now, before I call, uh, call for approval of the agenda, just, uh, I want to extend, uh, regrets. Actually, not regrets. Uh, I'll extend thanks, uh, from Mr. Robertson. Uh, Mr. Robertson delivered to my home during the holidays his resignation from this committee. And, uh, I just brought it into the C A O tonight. I can't even remember the date that he delivered it to the house, but uh, there was no point bringing it in any sooner because, uh, most of the staff was away and this is the first opportunity uh, that I've had to get back here. Uh, well, actually it's back once or twice, I think last week, but, uh, didn't bring it with me. So anyway, um, I'm gonna ask if I could, uh, the clerk, uh, to prepare letters to both Mr. Robertson and, uh, Mr. Bradley thanking them for their contributions to the committee. And, uh, try to get those letters signed by the end of this week. So moving title number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda now. Again, if somebody has the agenda with the movers and the seconders on it.
We don't have that.
Oh, okay, all right.
There isn't any.
Yeah, there is one, okay. Okay, I have to go to Councilor Cameron moving. And Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconding that the agenda be approved as circulated. Uh, anybody have any changes? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Yeah.
A motion is carried. All right, so then I'm moving to item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure of community interest. And the general nature thereof, is there any disclosure of community interest here this evening? None? All right, moving to item number, uh, four, which is business arising from the previous committee of the hall meeting minutes, if any. Now, I have a number of items to bring up, but I'll go last. Somebody else has other things to bring up first. Seeing none?
I, I do.
Okay, uh, you go ahead then, Counselor.
Yeah, I guess I have one on page, uh, three of fifty-one that, uh, moved by, uh, Deputy Mayor Deschamps, second by myself, that, uh, we purchased a hundred food cichlids. I just wanna know where, what in the progress, uh, we're about to see our, we've heard anything from, uh, Deputy Chair to the C A O.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, what we, what we have done is, uh, is entered into the, uh, to, to the agreement, uh, for, for the purchase. And what we will plan to do over the next, uh, month or two is, is, is get sort of some, uh, P R and, and get a list together and we'll plan to get those, uh, uh, a delivery in, in, in early spring to run that program.
But I thought there was a pilot project.
Then the pilot, the, the pilot project, we can, we, we can run that at any time and, and the thought process wants to to, to gather up those that would be interested in that pilot project, get that list and get everything, uh, ready to start in, in, in that April timeframe.
But are they here?
They are not here yet.
But they're on, they're ordered.
They, 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 they will, they will be ordered. They are not ordered as of yet, uh, but we can order them at any time.
I'm kinda excited to get one of myself and delay, so.
Me too. And myself, I get that. And, and, and I think what we want, what we wanna do is get together that list and, uh, get, get, get that program started just a moment later.
Well, I did have an inquiry from someone as a result of, uh, something that I had written on, uh, one of my writings. And, uh, that, I referred that person to you, but, um, do we have a, a staff member that's gonna be in charge of this project? I, I mean, I don't really think that inquiries about how to get one should come to the C A O.
Uh, no, uh, by, by the end of the week, we will, we, we, we will have a contact person.
Okay. Contact person to be named, uh.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
That's, so I think the one that you're talking about is on Sophia Street, Mr. Mayor.
Can't remember the lady's name.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, I did pass the, uh, I did pass the communication on to her, uh, from that lady to you, so I hope somebody's responded to her.
Okay, I will confirm that.
Okay, um, so I have a number of questions. Uh, the first one is on page seven of fifty-one. And on page seven of fifty-one, uh, Counselor Dillabow is inquiring about this, the speed, uh, speed dampening devices, uh, for use on Sophia Street. And I think at that point, it was reported that, uh, we had just received some new ones and, uh, they were being set up or programmed or something. So did, did one get established or placed on Sophia Street? I just wanted to follow up on that.
Uh, through the chair, I, I do not believe that one is up on Sophia Street as of yet, but, uh, that, that, that is certainly on the list of, uh, of items to get completed.
Uh, so just a question, uh, we've had a, a couple of them stolen, I believe. Two or three? How many have actually been stolen?
Uh, I, I, I believe that there have been, uh, two, uh, that have been, uh, stolen.
Okay, now, is, is there a way of amounting these things so that that doesn't happen?
Uh, through, through the chair, that is, that, that is one of the items that, uh, that staff is looking at. Uh, a potential better way to secure those, uh, so that they, uh, will, will remain where they, uh, were installed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And then the last question that I have is on the same page, actually. And I just wanted to make sure that it's on the list for consideration. Uh, that meeting that we're talking about, there was a delegation requesting, and this is at item number ten during the question period. The delegation requested a street light along Queen Street. And I just wanted to make sure that that's, uh, an active, uh, issue for the, uh, budget process. So, uh, I don't, I don't wanna lose track of that delegation's request. So I just asked that that item be flagged. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring up was also on page seven of fifty-one where there was some talk about, um, getting the River Route Bus, uh, service adjusted so that they would accept, uh, way of down boardings. Can you tell me if anything's happened with that yet?
So through, through the chair, that, uh, that, that item has been raised at the, uh, at that committee level, and, uh, I, I anticipate that we'll have, uh, a response, uh, with, within the, within, within the next week. In trying to get, uh, something moving forward in that regard.
Gosh, it seems to be such a long time since I first brought this up.
I've brought it up after to Mr. Mayor twice now. Believe me, I'm getting hit. People call on me.
Yeah, with the idea of being able to.
Flag it, yeah. Yeah, I have a lot of people on number two.
Right.
And, uh, I gotta report back to my, I've talked to C A O, but, so hoping something to get done.
Well, I mean, the thing that I'm looking at is, uh, even if we can pick up two passengers a day as a result of flag down where people can use the service without actually having to get to one of the stops, I think it'd be more than that. Yeah, I do too. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for a way to increase the ridership again. Okay, I won't belabor that point. Those were my issues. Um, I'm going to go then to item number five on, is there, are there any other, is there any other business arising before I move on? Sorry, Counselor Hunter.
I just have, uh, one question when you're referring to the speed monitors there that we've had stolen. I assume most of these monitors are being sold, sold for the solar panels that are on, not for the monitors. There's not much anybody really wanna, want monitors, more for, more for the solar power pack. On these new ones, we're getting as a solar pack, attached fixed to the monitor. Is there a way that solar pack could be separated some way that, uh, if we do this one, they're just stealing the, the solar pack. The monitors are, are expensive. Are, so they're still on the whole thing, I imagine, just to get the solar panels, so.
Well, we don't know that.
No, but what good is that to anybody, monitor?
And, that's fair, but may, there's a G P S built into that, isn't there? And those monitors are still, we should be able to find out where they are if they activate.
That's what I'm saying, they're not, they're just taken from the solar panels, so they don't activate that. They're like laying in the ditch someplace, 'cause they know they can't turn them on or you're gonna find them.
Well, I don't know if they do though.
So, so what's, what's the question about the locator?
So through, through, through the chair, there, there, there is no doubt that it, that it is, if it is an active unit, we, we, we would be able to locate it. However,
Not active.
It's, it's not act.
That's what I'm saying, I think they're just, they're just wanting for the solar panels. If there's a way to, so we're gonna wait to fix to, to and cheaper, we, we lose, we lose the solar panel, we lose the monitor.
So what is the answer? The two combined in one unit, or?
Uh, through, through, through the, through the chair, I, 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 I am not sure at, at, at this particular moment, but it, it's, it's a valid point and I'll, I'll certainly relate that.
Okay, well, we'll leave it up to the staff then to try to determine a way to prevent this stuff. Um, okay, I'm ready to move on unless there are other items arising. No other business arising. I'm going on to item number five, which is delegations and presentations we have done here this evening. And so that, that leads me to item number six, which is the two discussion items. The first item up for discussion is six A, United Counties of Leeds and Grenble Housing Affordability Task Force Report. And, uh, I did ask that the entire report be circulated with this package. Uh, but I draw your attention to page ten of fifty-one, which is, uh, the specific reason that I asked to have this on the agenda. On page ten of fifty-one, there's a letter addressed from the county clerk, the interim county clerk, to our township, uh, pointing out that on December, at the December eighth meeting of the Joint Services Committee, the report of the Housing Affordability Task Force was adopted, which included the task force's recommendations. And there were, this is the recommendation, and it's the recommendation that I wanna get your, uh, I wanna get your feedback on. That the Housing Affordability Task Force recommends that the recommendations contained in the report, summary report and recommendations be implemented by the United Counties of Leeds and Grenble, City of Rockville, Town of Ganonock, by the Town of Prescott. Now, you all know that when reports are, eh, sent forward from committees, s- sometimes there's a number of recommendations in the report and you don't hold back the report if you happen to disagree with one or two of the recommendations, which in this case I did. And there are two specific recommendations in that report that I wanna get your feeling on. First of all, the, the Housing Affordability Task Force spent the entire year talking about affordable housing. And you see the definition of affordable housing throughout the report. As the re-final report came in to its draft form and before it even got to council, the concept of attainable housing was also included in the report. And as far as attainable housing was concerned, there were two recommendations regarding attainable housing, and one was that we set up another committee to evaluate and look into attainable housing. And that the county appoint an attainable housing coordinator position. Now, you know, I was part of the task force and, and as part of the task force, naturally I'm gonna support the final report, but that doesn't mean I have to support the recommendations in the report. And those are two that I have a difficult problem with. So you've had, had an opportunity to review the task force report and its recommendations, and I'd like to get some feedback on those two points. Let's open the floor for discussion here. I'm asking for, what I'm basically looking for is some support, uh, to, uh, to, I'm, I'm gonna put it this way, I'm looking for some support to say that our council doesn't really go along with the recommendations regarding attainable housing. Either the appointment of a new committee or the hiring of a housing coordinator. I've got a number of reasons and I'll speak to those reasons if I'm asked.
Mr. Mayor. I looked, I looked quickly at this report, but because we've only had it since Friday and being also the, the time of year with friends, family and things like that going on, I didn't personally have a chance to digest this in my full form. However, one of the things that sort of jumped out at me a little bit was how, what is the procedure that some of these lands that they're talking about are going to be procured? I think they mentioned market value and other, and, and I'm a little curious as to about what o- other might, might mean. Because we in our own township here, we do have several lots that are just sort of sitting there doing nothing. And I guess what I'm concerned about is if someone in one of these committees is aware of which lands they are, would they use, uh, expropriation as a means of procuring these lands?
Okay, so I've been, uh, um, let me deal with that. And, and can you point out that specific recommendations of?
Mr. Mayor, I really wish I could, but, but I can't. It's just somewhere where I read and I didn't make note of it. I was just thumbing through. Uh, and I think it said something about fair market value for purchasing and other means. I, I think that was the word.
Okay, so the, the concept is this. The concept is, in an effort to attain or to, to bring more affordable housing into the marketplace, one of the things that municipalities are being asked to do is to make land that would be su- um, suitable for development, to make it available at reasonable prices or less than market prices so that developers can develop. Now, giving a, a specific example. So in North Grenble, for example, North Grenble had a building, which, uh, although it had been rented in the past, was at the present time vacant. And in the month of November, the county sent around, uh, uh, because we had gotten a grant through one of the programs from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. We had gotten a grant, uh, to build affordable housing. And we had to make the commitment by, uh, December the thirty-first. I think it's a million point three. So the county sent around, does anybody have a location where we could develop some affordable housing with this million point three dollars and make a commitment by December the thirty-first? I was going to recommend the, uh, the hotel property in Cardinal, because it had to be a, the properties they were looking for had to be on sewer and water. But the, the ho- hotel in Cardinal is already being used for affordable housing, so I didn't do that. But North Grenble had a building which was on municipal sewer and water, which was vacant at the time. And they responded to the county and said, listen, we'll give you that building on a long-term lease for twenty years for a dollar a year. Now, at the county council meeting, uh, now where am I here? At the county committee meeting last week, the committee agreed to spend that one point three million dollars renovating that building to make nine affordable housing units available within the next twelve months. We got an agreement from the province to go past the December thirty-first commitment deadline to January the twentieth commitment deadline, which is our next meeting, January seventeenth, I think, is our next meeting. So the long and the short of it is, that's one way in which North Grenble is going to make a building available at less than market value, so that it can be used for affordable housing. Now, I know that that doesn't address the specific issue that I put on the table, but it does address your issue. And getting back to your question or your i- issue about we have vacant property in the township, we do have vacant land in the township that is on, uh, service municipal services
Correct.
in Cardinal. And in Spenceville, we have vacant land on sewer services. And, you know, is there some way that we can harness that land, make it available to some developer to get some additional housing up and running in a short fashion, at affordable, at affordable rentals? And by the way, I hope that, and your point is well-taken, that you've only had this report for a short period of time. The whole concept of affordable is really outlined quite clearly in the report itself. And please understand that there are two definitions of affordable. There's affordable ownership and affordable renting. And both of those refer to, it's afford, it's defined to be affordable if it's at eighty percent of market, what the market would normally bring. The province does a survey throughout the United Counties. They determine what the market rent is for, let's, let, let's say the market value is of a two-bedroom unit. So if the market rental of a two vel-, if the market sale price of a two-bedroom unit is three hundred thousand, affordable ownership would be, for a two-bedroom unit, would be three hundred thousand, less twenty percent, at eighty percent. That's affordable ownership. Affordable rental works the same way. Province does a survey. Market rental for a two-bedroom unit is X, affordable is X minus twenty percent. Now, we don't have to deal with this letter from the clerk today, but I would like to put it out for council to give me a response no later than the meeting at the end of the month. Because I have to get back to county council with the position of our council within a month.
Question?
Yeah.
Uh, going to what, what you just said about the eighty percent for, for ownership and rental. When it comes to, to the secondary suites, from, from what I read in, uh, the newspaper and what I read on here is that we as a municipality will be contributing dollars towards, um, helping people build secondary suites, uh, on, on their house. So my question would be, the, so the unit that you would create, let's just use it as my house then. So I could apply to, to the United Counties for support to build a secondary suite in my house. As long as I made it eighty, rented it out for eighty percent of whatever market value of a rental would be, regardless of what my house is worth. That's, right in thinking that?
That's, that's my understanding, for the period of time that you own the house.
Right, and if you sell it, if you sell it, within fifteen years, you have to give back the full value of what you were given to build the suite.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's the way that I, that I read it. So, so ultimately, we're, we could be for, for the, that's a, I assume you would call that a public-private partnership, sort of. I think where I struggle with that concept a, a little bit is that I mean, you could, there's no limitation on, like, it could be anyone that does that, like, unless I missed something.
Uh, it, you have to own and live in the unit. Now, there is a separate program that they're proposing for landlords that don't own or live in the unit, but they're landlords of less than, of ten or less units. In other words, they're not mega landlords that rent fifty units.
So we're going to supplement potentially me, I'll use me as the example, uh, to become a landlord and create a secondary unit in my property.
For, and I think it, I think the way you worded it is up to twenty-five thousand.
It's either twenty-five or thirty-five.
Yeah, it's twenty-five.
I don't want, I don't want to miss, oh, that's why I didn't, uh,
No, I just, that, counsel.
No, I think, I think, I'm just trying to get more out of
Yeah.
of what, what all was in the document, 'cause I, I still don't know how I feel that fixes a housing affordability. I mean, I think it always falls back on the definition of the housing affordability for me.
Done.
Because if it's a million dollar, if it's a million dollar, uh, home and it's putting in a, an apartment on the back of it, um, and we're supplementing that million-dollar home to create that, to make the, the owner's mortgage last on a million-dollar home, to me, that's not affordable.
Well, depending on what the rental of that unit is.
I, I understand that, but I mean, the concept of why secondary dwellings are allowed is to reduce the mortgage of the person who owns the property, or at least that's part of the reasoning, so that it makes the original purchaser, uh, that housing more affordable for those people as well.
Oh, well.
And that's where I struggle with the definition of housing affordability.
Okay, but let's go back to first principles here. The concept of additional accommodation units, which I think is what we're now calling additional housing units.
Uh, yeah, they're either, they're, they're either additional housing units or se-, yeah, I think we've termed them as, uh, secondary dwellings.
Well.
Second dwelling units, and, and, so we've gotta change that. It, it is, it's.
Yeah, we're trying to move it to the, so there's not granny seats and secondary suites. We're trying to move it to additional.
Units and additional, uh,
Right.
additional dwellings.
Okay, so let's go back to first principles. That concept came from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing through, th- through a bill. And so his, and, and, and the concept of that bill was to get additional affordable housing into the marketplace, all over the province, by changing basically the definition of what is a single-family residence. So he's changed the definition of a s- single-family residence. No longer means one family in one house. It means, here's the main structure. The secondary unit is secondary to it, and the backyard unit is a se-, is a, is a second one. So you've now got three, um, housing units on the same property. And, and so that's the big concept, not that one of those last two would help with the main mortgage. The, the, that, that's a sort of a side effect.
Yeah, they've certainly promoted it as, as, as for landlords or building it to reduce your, your costs.
They may have promoted it that way, but that wasn't the main purpose.
What, so, so to further the, my, one of my concerns is, is what prevents this from, uh, becoming a, uh, bed and breakfast nightmare or a Airbnb nightmare? What, what, what guarantee is there that this becomes an eighty percent rental unit that, that actually helps people get a hand up out of homelessness or, or gets them into attainable or affordable, oh, uh, housing, but prevents me from, from turning my backyard into okay, our renters' paradise?
Yeah, okay, so, well, now there's two, there's two distinctions here. So if your main concern is, uh, B, B and B, okay? Uh, bed, uh, bed and breakfast type, short term. Uh, bed, uh, bed and breakfast type, short term. Okay, so in order to set up this program where there's twenty-five thousand dollar grant available. To the owner to establish this secondary unit. The county will have to set up a whole program. They will have to set up an application form. They will have to set up a, a, um, an allocation form and an allocation process. Uh, and we saw some of the conditions surrounding that grant at the meeting last week.
Yeah.
And then there will be verification process. So in other words, I'm assuming that there will be some sort of a, a leasing, a lease agreement in place. Uh, which will be a long-term lease, not, you're, you're there for the weekend, it'll be long-term lease.
Yeah, and if you don't do that, then you obviously don't qualify for the twenty-five thousand, you have to pay it all back.
Or, yes, or if you abuse it, you have to pay it all back.
Okay, and my last, uh, question, because you were there for all these meetings and we're just sort of reading the summary of it in our, in our report. Um. When it comes to like the, the building they're building in, in Kemphill, or the building they're renovating in Kemphill. They're renovating, United Counties renovating another one on Pur Street near me. That's a transitional housing. Uh, uh, used to be the church.
Yeah, it's called Dixie Place.
Yeah, and it's, that's a, a good, a good use of these funds, I think, as well, but, um. What, in, in this, uh, when I see, you know, like, we're, we're interested in, of course, you know, helping people, I think. Up and, and getting home, homeownership, but. We, we certainly in this township lack services. And unless they have things like the River Route Bus Service. Um, they have to go to Brockville or Prescott for doctor's appointments. People. Um, you know, in a lot of these situations are vehicleless. Um, and, you know, encouraging and bringing them into more rural areas, I struggle with, with that concept. I know. Uh, I think you might have even used the example of a Wall Street style. Uh, which I think is a fantastic building in Brockville. Um, but Brockville's like the right place for it with, uh, hospital services, with. Um, you know, the United County Services, with, uh, family support, children and family support services. Uh, there are certainly a lot more services there, uh, for, for, uh, homeless and, uh. You know, lower income families than there are in areas like ours, even though. Real estate and rentals are seemingly cheaper in, in our rural areas. They address that?
Well, but don't forget, the county also has a program. And we've allocated, and I forget the number right now, so I don't, I don't put a false number out there. The county also has a program whereby. If you have a job that requires transportation. We will, the county will provide you with a five thousand dollar. Of interest-free loan to ward the purchase of a used vehicle. To get you back and forth to your place of work. And that loan is repayable without interest at, I think, two hundred dollars a month, or some ridiculously small amount of money. Now, we, at the last time that we had a report on that program, we had something like six of those loans outstanding. Every household that had got one of those loans. And secured a vehicle was able to increase the household income by like five, ten, twenty times. Uh, and every household that had got one of those loans and secured a vehicle was up to date in their repayments. So transportation is an issue. We've addressed it in two different ways. That's one, and the other one, of course, is this River Route Bus. But again. You've got to remember, and I, I mean, the, the River Route Bus scares me because. That's individual taxpayers' pockets paying for one, two, and three people to ride to work every day. Paying a great cost, well over five thousand dollars. You know? If we could get the ridership on the bus up. It might eventually work out, but at nine people, I think that was the number that we got the last report from the CIO. What was it, nine a day?
Uh, it, 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 it had, it, it had varied, but I think, I, I think it's a little bit more than that, than, than nine a day.
Yeah, but in any case, when you figure six round trips between Brockville and Prescott. Nine riders, or whatever it was. Anyway, uh, now, Mr., Mr. Rainville had his.
I'll, I'll withdraw my question.
Okay, so, uh, councillor.
I know, I've read this report over a couple of times. Lot, or to try to, he said to try to digest in it, but. I know we want affordable housing and I know we have a duty to try to. Work with it. It just seemed to me that. We seem to be getting more and more of this down load. On the townships, trying to look after instead of the province. Open after. Rather maybe putting up some money and stuff, but they're not putting up any, any of the. Lake work, administration work and stuff that takes to. To run these programs. And then when they throw in, as you mentioned, this attainable. And counties want to create another job.
No, 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 don't get, no, don't say counties wants to do.
No, what I say, it's in the report.
It's in the report, yeah.
They want to create another. I think they're being asked, we're being asked enough to consider, consider, we're affordable, trying to hear, hear, not. Trying to get in something that's attainable. I think that's up to the individual person, whether our house is attainable. For, for you.
And a number of us have argued that point. Attainable is within the, i- if, attainable is really to the individual.
Whether you're talking about a seventy-five thousand dollar.
Yep.
Threshold hold there. Seventy-five thousand doesn't may, maybe seem like a lot of the, of a household. Income, or you're making that, would probably. Have signs of increasing that. With. More jobs moving up and running another, and that makes sure housing becomes attainable.
Well.
To yourselves.
And, and, and you know, what a, a number of us have said, you know, first of all, whether or not it's attainable depends on your aspirations as an individual. And your family's aspirations. It's not something that we can give you. You've got a desire. As numbers of it made that point, and the concept of that committee is. Really quite nebulous and, and. The other part of it, of course, is this hiring of an attainable housing coordinator. County is already. In the last six months, hired a second new, this is an entirely new position. At the United Counties where the individual is specifically hired for that purpose. To help, uh, people find accommodation, okay? And so for this committee to now recommend another position is just duplication. And in my mind, they haven't given the initial work that we've already done. And the work that's been done by the minister in making the changes, they haven't given that time to work its way into the economy yet. That's something that takes two to three years to work its way in. So that's why I'm asking, you know, our county, our council to kind of get, 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 uh, give me some, some support here because. Uh, hiring the position was, you're looking at a hundred grand a year. Between the hiring of the individual and support, you know, support staff. And even just running a committee of eight or ten or twelve people is an expensive proposition.
So, so just so that I, and I think I have this now, and, and I probably should have when we started the conversation. The report by Dylan has been accepted. And reviewed by county's council, but they're not acting on any of the recommendations in it. They're waiting for input from us back. Before they act on recommendations.
No, no, we've acted on a lot of the Dylan recommendations. They're in the report here and some of them have already been implemented at the social.
Yeah, I saw some.
Within the social services portfolio.
Yeah, so, so going back to then what, when you're talking about the attainable part. Well, it's a recommendation. Are they still looking for support to. To, to hire that? Is that something that they, comes out of our discussions here as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And this whole concept of attainable, I mean, we spent a whole year talking about affordable. And this whole concept of attainable didn't seem to even raise its head till the last thirty days. Then all of a sudden, it appears in the report. Many of us were sort of flabbergasted to see it there. But you're not going to hold up a report just because you have a problem with something that's last minute. Have to deal with it in a different way. You know, we all sat there for the full year of meetings, so there's the report. It's got a number of recommendations in it, but. Just because we ask county council to receive the report doesn't mean that we're asking them to, to, well, the, although the motion that came out was. In my mind, it was overly worded, if I can put it that way.
I just think the whole process. Here in, in county's older, these housing issues, but. We've got, trying to get the committee crazy.
Yeah.
Here, they want the committee after, every time something is up, they, four hundred and fifty.
Well, I appreciate that comment.
Let's deal with, with. What we got. Already got all our, our official plans, zoning bylaws to, we had to change there. There, as you say, let's deal with what we got here and give it a chance to see what happens before we start. Just continuously throwing dogs and throwing money out for something, so.
All right, uh, now, Mr. CIO, I hope you can capture that concept from councillor Hunter because. I would at some point like to see a letter to back to the clerk. Go ahead, and then I see Mr. Rainville.
Pete, you might have been ahead of me if you want to go.
No, I was just gonna say that, um, obviously absorbing all of this, um, the Ontario government sets up a program. For which a year has been spent debating it through committees.
No, 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 that wasn't the government.
Okay.
The county set up this.
County set this.
Set up this affordable housing task force.
And they've spent a year discussing this through committees? The past year.
Yeah, the task force has spent a year meeting all thirteen mayors. The ten mayors from the United Counties and the three mayors from Brockville, Gannon Oakway, and Prescott, thirteen. And the county supported that committee. They provided the secretarial support, they provided the meeting support, they provided the mileage support.
So a lot of funding.
A lot of funding.
And the point of this is to what? To bring in affordable housing to our local communities?
Well, the main point was to raise awareness of what is affordable housing. What are the things that we as municipalities can do to enable affordable housing? And we as a township have taken a major step. I mean, our official plan recognizes affordable housing. And our zoning bylaw that we're presently working through is going to recognize these additional units. Both the, the suite in the house and the backyard suite. It's going to recognize both of those. As a, as a right of ownership. So we've done a lot to just come to grips with this affordable housing concept.
So.
And don't forget, we made major changes to the Meadowlands subdivision agreement. We went from forty-six lots initially, all single-family residential. To ninety-some, which was a combination of single-family residential and duplexes. To now we're at a hundred and forty-six units. Singles, doubles, triplexes, and quadrplexes. I mean, we've done a, we've come a long way to. Enable affordable housing in that subdivision. And we're doing the same on the other subdivision across County Road twenty-two.
So, so are we saying that you're wanting to subsidize private land and building owners? So that they develop affordable housing so they can profit off of that?
Well, I mean, the profit is the, the profit is the secondary result. The primary result is additional rental units in the marketplace.
And how does that benefit township? I'm sorry, I, I'm missing.
Well, it, it.
I'm a business person.
No, 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 but.
I understand the social aspect of it as much as I do the business.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, we all, we all recognize, at least. Through my work on this affordable housing task force, I've come to realize that there is a real shortage of housing. You know, so how do you get more housing into the marketplace? And by the way, just so you know, I mean, the province has recognized and their goal now is. To create a situation within the province where they can bring a million additionable, additional. Uh, housing units into the market each year for the next number of years. That's what's required in the province. A million new. Housing units every year, whether they be ownership. Rental, high-rise, low-rise, co-op, whatever it is. They need a, a million new housing units in the marketplace. Go ahead.
Were, were you, are you done before I go?
I, I think I made one.
Um, to me, the answer, though, I mean. Isn't, I don't know, like, I don't see government housing or making it more housing stock that's owned by. By government as the solution. To me, it's, and you brought it up, and you might have even mentioned this in your comments too. Um, in this, this report. Um, is finding ways to get our builders to, to get building in, in those subdivisions that are there. We've been over backwards, in my opinion, for Meadowland subdivision, so that it gets built. Um, but I think reducing rent tape, whether that means that we cut, you know, building fees or, or reduce building fees. Uh, so that builders build, what, find out what builders need. You know, what red tape builders need taken out of the way so that they'll open up, you know, subdivisions like Meadowlands and, and get building. Um, you know, find out what the issues are, uh, that government's causing to prevent. Private enterprise from building in places like, um. Meadowlands and, and the Charlotte. I mean, those are our two ones that are on record. Uh, I know that it takes forever to get a subdivision on record. Um. But we have two that are on record. We've been kicking that can for a long time.
No, 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 we have.
Well, who, the builders have, not us. We've done everything in my opinion that we can, but we have to find ways, I think. To reduce that. I'm not sure that getting involved in, in more government-owned housing is something that, that I want to. I certainly believe in cutting as much red tape out of the way as possible to get builders to build. Uh, finding whatever it takes for private enterprise to, to make those investments and, and, and to create more affordable house. I'm not sure what those solutions are.
Okay, but let's go back a step, though, and, and let's not compare what happens in Edwardsburg Cardinal. With what happens in a place like Ottawa. In a, in a place like Edwardsburg Cardinal, if we have a developer that expresses an interest. We bend over backwards, our staff and our council, to enable things to go forward quickly.
Yeah.
We hold special council meetings, we take things to special committees, we move the process quickly. In a place like Ottawa, the process is process. It takes a developer three to five years to get a plan of subdivision approved. We're not like that. So our, the thing that holds us back is that our developers are putting up their own money. And they're not prepared to jump in to a five hundred thousand investment for sewer, water, roads. Electrical. On speculation that the ten or twenty or thirty houses will sell quickly. Time is money in their world, even though interest rates are low. Uh, for a developer to put up, I mean. Right now, uh, the, the, the investment in Meadowland subdivision is well over three hundred thousand dollars. And that hasn't even put water and sewer pipes in the ground yet, nor has it built roads. Nor has it built the first house.
So not three hundred, it's four hundred.
Hey?
It's not three hundred, it's four hundred.
Could be, yes.
If it did.
And that's not affordable.
But if it did put the water and the sewer and, and those commitments in to get the builder building, would the builder build?
That's, that's something we don't know.
I mean, that might be a good use of some of that one point three million dollars.
Yes, and, and, uh, uh, in a previous life where I was on another council, we used to upfront that cost. We would build the sewer and the water. We would build it. And, and, and if it, and if it serviced twenty lots. we would say to the builder, okay, we've serviced twenty lots, you pay us back one twentieth every lot you sell. And we would do that. But that's not done here in Eastern Ontario, to the best of my knowledge. Not, no, no municipal council has taken that approach yet. In the north, we had to because the closest developer was six hours away in Winnipeg. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't risk coming into our marketplace.
I think one of the main things that they want to get affordable housing, and I think we've all picked this around council, but it's for developers that they, they want mobile rental units built. Until they change that stupid landlord tenant. Aren't getting any developers, no matter how much money they want upfront, percentage-wise, they're gonna, they're gonna build themselves.
But there is a change.
They don't even seem to wanna look at that.
Well, there is a change. And the change, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not totally familiar with the change, but the change goes something like this. Uh, a, a, a renter, a large renter that's renting thirty, fifty, sixty units. For any building, for any rental accommodation building that's built after a certain date, that restriction on rent increases is gone, and access to the tenant board is gone. To some extent, it's modified. They haven't done away with the act, but what they've done is made it, made those new buildings come under a different regulatory regime. Now, the specifics I'm not aware of. I, you know, I, I, and I, I share with you because every time I meet with the minister, I make that same point. You gotta change that act. And he says to me, well, I got, you know, I got five thousand, five hundred units being built in Toronto. Private industry, private, private investment. I said, okay, well, well, that's because of the changes that we made here and here and there.
But really, what's five hundred units in the city of Toronto?
Yeah, nothing. Yeah, but it might be one building or two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Mr. Mayor, when we're, when we're doing this in our township, or where we are.
Yeah.
They want service lots, United Counties. They don't want sew, wa, wells and, and sewers.
Well, hang on one second, hang on one second.
Wells.
That one grant that we got from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, that one point three million dollar grant, it had to be for development on, on service lots. That's the only grant that I'm aware of that had that restriction tied to it. So the county, from the county point of view, the county, this, these, these twenty-five thousand dollar grants that I'm talking about, they, they, now, I saw the criteria last week, but I can't remember, but I don't think that there was a correct requirement to get that twenty-five thousand dollar grant, uh, that it had to be on sewer and water. I think it could be a resident in, uh, Heimann Road or a resident on, uh, you know, on County Road forty-four. See, that, that's my point.
We have ten thousand acres here that the Ontario government owns.
Yep.
And, I mean, we got houses, how many houses are boarded up where we could tear them down and make, uh, duplexes? They're triplexes. I don't know, twenty, ten I know, that are boarded up, the lands there.
Yeah.
And I don't understand why we, we're not looking into that, or the Ontario government, because they own, to say, okay, to the counties, this is yours.
Well, don't forget, we're the agent that's trying to make that happen.
Well, okay, I mean, what an opportunity. We, you got, you got land there, boarded up homes, their rock are gonna fall down or cause a fire, whatever, that we could donate to them because they've been abandoned for ten years now, but at least the land's there.
Yes.
And it's severed.
Yes.
You need new wa, you need new wells, you need new sewer.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm honoring your point, you're adding.
We have an opportunity here, that, you know, like even if Marysoe wanna buy, sell that old school for sale, they're saying, well, we don't, you know, we need, we need housing. Geez, there's a perfect example. You can do nine rentals in there.
Yep.
I mean, I, I, I just don't think we're, I, I don't know, I, I, I just, I just don't think that, uh, that, uh, we're looking in the right direction. I mean, I know, I know what Peter's saying, like, uh, uh, it's a business. But we are gonna get, house goes up, we are gonna do, we are gonna get taxes off that house. You know, no matter what, you know, blacks or whatever.
But imagine what we could do if we had water in Spencerville.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I, I'm just saying, I mean, we, we have so much rural land that's not being used. And that, well, you know, going to waste, if, if you're looking at land, it says here, oh, we need land, we'll give it to. Well, geez, I would hope Mr. Clark could say, hey, we got all kinds for you down in Edwardsburg.
Don't worry.
Well, I am worried.
Well, he's on our side, but getting that ten thousand acres is, I haven't reported to council recently.
That's where I go with this, I mean, and, you know, and, and you, we, I guess you said that we're working with developers or whoever came up with her. Edwardsburg contractors need to work at a lower end of the market to create houses that are affordable. Well, I mean, we went through that with, with, uh, yeah, Corey, and he said, geez, I can't build that for this.
No, that's right, but so his, his, his point is it has to be more density.
Oh, yeah, well, we, we want, we want curbs and, uh,
Yep.
And gutters.
Yeah.
And then he said, well, geez, you, you want me to do that? But.
And we gave up the turrets and gutters.
Yeah, but it takes it down, so maybe, maybe we should go to him and say, okay, you build us ten affordable housing, and we'll put the sewers in for those ten and water. We will put it in tomorrow for you.
Then you build ten. No, 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 but understand something. Whether we upfront the money or he upfronts the money, the sewer and water still has to be paid for. There's still a cost of the house.
Agreed, but at least it's in there. He doesn't have to worry about, and then like you said, he'd take one twentieth, one.
Well, I mean, if we wanna do that, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why, if, like, like, your deputies say, well, what can we do for the contractor? Maybe put that in front of us. Or the new one across the road, and say, hey, we'll do this, you put twenty affordable house, which is I think two hundred and maybe five thousand they come in right now.
Anyway, I mean, those are all ideas. I'm not, I'm not shooting down any ideas. Okay.
I agree, your question about that, uh, other committee, we don't need, we need that like we need another whole man, so.
We don't need more, I think.
No. So I'm with you, Mr. Mayor, we wanna send a letter saying no, we, we disagree.
Okay, Mr. CIO.
With the attainable housing letter. Well, with the ta, attainable housing action group, I, I, I just don't see any.
Well, I, I.
Any purpose in it.
Well, I agree with you there, and, okay, well, I think we have enough of the discussion here that, you know, I mean, I, I appreciate the time, and I know that, uh, Council Cameron, it's the wrong time of the year to be putting this out, but I can only deal with the agenda that I got. And, uh, so I appreciate the fact that, you know, you did have some time. The report's in front of you.
It's a lot, for three days.
Yeah, the, yes, the report is there, and.
And you tell it too, so.
And, and don't, don't hesitate as you go through this report again, i- in a little bit more detail, don't hesitate to bring questions to me, uh, either privately or at meetings, because it, it is something that we have to try to raise awareness throughout the entire community about. And that's part of the job of, of the council. So I think with those comments, I'm gonna move on.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll do a, a draft report back to the clerk, and, uh, we will get that draft report ready for, uh, either the PW meeting or the, or the committee meeting, or the council meeting on the end of the week. All right, I'm, wanna move on now to item six B, uh, which is a question of electronic participation at council meetings and which, of course, would necessitate another change to our procedural bylaw. And, uh, I'm looking at page thirty-seven of fifty-one, and, uh, uh, just a couple of errors in the, in the background sentence there. Staff has received another request to consider the opportunity for council committee members to participate and contribute. Not, the word shouldn't be participation, to participate and contribute electronically through a hybrid model due to the continually changing restrictions in place by the provincial government to, the word should be curb, C U R B, curb, uh, COVID and various variants. Now, uh, I'm gonna let Deputy Mayor speak to this because it's Deputy Mayor that, that asked to have this matter brought forward and, and, uh, maybe Deputy Mary, you might wanna explain why, um, electronic participation is not available to us right now. Start there.
Cause I voted against it.
No.
Well, ultimately it is. Um, uh, why isn't it, uh, available to us right now? There, I think, um, without redoing our bylaw, if I understand this correctly, uh, we have to re, if it changed our bylaw to allow electronic participation uh, and that it dictates participation, uh, without there being uh, a provincial emergency declaration. If there was a provincial emergency declaration, uh, I don't believe that we would have to do that.
That's right.
Uh, why we have the mechanism to contribute electronically was because during the beginning of the pandemic, under that emergency declaration, the province allowed electronic participation, uh, during that, but it also allowed um, bylaws to be adapted, uh, for, forever, uh, to allow, um, electronic participation. We were presented with that option, I voted against that option at the time. Uh, but I think we voted it in for a three-month term, uh, when COVID was really bad, uh, last time. The reason I asked for this to be brought forward, again, for consideration and at least discussion, is um, while I think we all believe that sitting at the council table is the best place for discussions to happen and best governance happens at that, we do almost all of our governance by committee, uh, before it ever gets to the, to the full council table. My concern was putting people like Mark Packwood, um, Mr. Rainville, uh, Cody Outway, Connor, um, Cleary, any of our very valuable committee members. We're forcing them to, to come into chambers if they want to contribute to, to governance, and I, I struggle with, with forcing somebody like, and I, I'm not gonna put words in, uh, Mr. Rainville's mouth, but all committee members to, to come in here. I don't mind coming in here, um, to, to participate, but I, I struggle with something as, as viral as, uh, Omicron proves to be. Um, it's certainly going to impact, uh, I think the province says right now, up to thirty percent of the workforce can expect to be off over the next, uh, uh, three weeks, I think it is now. Um, i- if that happens, I would hate for Mr. Cleary to have to close his business because he came to a council meeting. I, I hate for Mr. Uh, Outway to make his children sick because they cannot be vaccinated. Um, and, and quite possibly our fire department, uh, because he's a member of our fire department, so giving them uh, the, the, the possibility to participate electronically when we have that tool in our tool chest uh, provides another layer of safety and security for those valuable committee members. Um, I think we saw it tonight, uh, at our earlier meeting, where, where we had our port general manager, uh, contributing via Zoom, we had, uh, Mr. McCauley uh, contributing via Zoom, uh, as well, and without changes to that, Mr. Dally could, could contribute, but Frank couldn't, Mr. McCauley, excuse me, uh, couldn't contribute through, through those meetings without procedural changes, so, um, and, and Mr. McCauley's another great example, somebody who, who just had a heart surgery, and the last thing I would wanna do is, is have him come in here and put him at any, any risk unknowingly to, to any of us. So if Mr. McCauley chooses to come in, that's, that's up to him, but when we have that tool in our chest to offer, uh, to those committee members, I, I think, I think as a leader, I, I feel it's my responsibility to at least offer them the opportunity to contribute electronically, even if it's only for another couple months to get us, get us through this, or until at least the, you know, the pandemic's over. Uh, I think it would be a very responsible thing for, for us to consider.
Counselor?
Uh, thank you. Yes, and, and Mr. Mayor, I, I concur quite a bit with Deputy Mayor. But I don't think it should be just a COVID situation. We, we've just witnessed Mr. McCauley, who had a heart condition, uh, or a heart, uh, situation. And theoretically, he could not participate in the meeting just because of the, the ruling that we have. So it doesn't necessarily just have to be a medical COVID situation. It could be a severe ice storm or climatic weather. It could be a multitude of things where someone cannot make it to this meeting or a meeting on that, on that particular night. Um, so I, I, I feel that the, the bylaw does have to be upgraded to include that. But it has, there has to be a stipulation there as well that for whatever reason, the people cannot make the meeting for a reason. Not because they decided they're gonna spend an extra day in Toronto because we can do it by, by, uh, by electronic purposes, so it, it, when we make the change, and I, and I do agree, we do have to make the change in this day and age for electronic participation, there, there, there has to be, uh, there, there has to be some rules and, and regulations, and with the province coming down and saying, we got a problem, we advise you to stay home, I totally agree with Deputy, with Deputy Mayor.
I think, Council Cameron, it, it does include that on page thirty-nine. Um, um, number five. Point one oh seven says in-person participation shall remain the primary method. Um, and then it goes on to say.
Yes.
Uh, not safe to attend because of weather, health restrictions, provincial government orders, activation of emergency control, medical absences, parental leave, or, uh, travel on other municipal business, so I think it does do a really good job of outlining all of the things that, that you said, I, I just.
Well, in that case then, in that case then, why, when someone was off and came to us via, via remote, he, that person was not allowed to vote or, uh, or, uh, whatever it was, he wasn't allowed to, he wasn't allowed to contribute or vote.
We, so we.
If that's already there, why, why couldn't we?
It expired in July. We only allowed it for three months.
That's, that's exactly, that, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is the fact that, okay, we've got those things in place, that's, 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 that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Uh, all we have to do is get rid of the July thirty-first.
Right.
Fine with me.
See, go ahead. I, I mean, there's so many catchalls, medical absence, parents leave, I don't know, whatever. I mean, a person can, comes into, becomes a councillor, can pretty much say, well, geez, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go to the council tonight, I'm gonna stay at home and do remotely on Zoom. I mean, and, and there's all kinds of, of ways to get out of it.
No.
Reasons, safety. And what's, that's mine.
And, and what's the matter with that?
Well, the matter is, if, if there's no excuse, you should be here. That's all I'm saying. As a council member, we should be in person as much as we can. I'm not, I'm not saying, whether our volunteer members, maybe, but our, us as councillors or the mayor should take every opportunity, if we can, take the help precautions like we have and be in person and not, you know, you know how hard it is to follow somebody? Like, you're, you're, you're concentrating on your work here, and then you forget about, I forget even about poor Frank and Robert today. So, I, I have a, I really have an issue. I don't mind doing it now because of the, that, do it. Well, you're around the clock then.
I, I respect that part, Steve, like, but it's not hard to follow along. It, it might, we might have issues here, but we also have the library, the Radioon Centre. I mean, you know, during, and, I mean, I know the internet's not the greatest, uh, here, but I've sat on, on, like, many, many, many Zoom meetings, they're not that hard to follow along.
I'm just saying that.
Wait, wait, hang on, one second.
Okay.
We're not here to follow along in a meeting. I wanna correct that.
Okay, you can correct that one. They're, they're not that hard to contribute on.
Counselor?
I agree with you, Counselor. You know, I don't mind covering it in when you're in the middle of pandemic and severe things, but you can have all these extra things you want. The school board has had electronic participation for a number of years, and I understand that they have a lot of these things on their team. On their team that you're supposed to have. They've had a couple of members that's on in the last term, term on, on there that never attended a single meeting in person. They always had a reason why they were doing it by Zoom. I don't agree. I'm not comfortable with your position. You should be there.
How many, how many conservation, sanitation conservation meetings have you been to since the pandemic started?
That was against a lot of our wishes there too.
Like the old hay though.
You know, I'm going to take it in.
And I'll, I'll tell you the experience at county council. To a man, everybody on county council spoke. No, our job is to be here. We should, we absolutely, we absolutely, we have to be here. We're only doing this temporarily. We're only doing it temporarily. We're going to be there. You know what? Since that bylaw went into effect to allow electronic participation. There's been two people that show up at county council, me and the order. And sometimes Herb Scott. And the rest, you don't see them. It's always. And, and you know, I mean, you know how big the county council chamber is. There's more than enough room for three more people to be. Who's six, six feet apart. So. You know, but nobody comes, you know, in spite of the fact that they swore on. You know, they, 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 they felt it was their duty to be there. They felt they were going to make every effort to be there. Now, some of them. I got to admit, have legitimate concerns for not being there, but others, and many times, and this is the most disturbing part of it. Many times our Zoom meetings are totally interrupted because somebody that's participating. Gets, gets knocked off. Uh, I've seen people get knocked off right in the middle of making a point. And, and they think that they're still talking to us, but they're frozen on the screen and there's no voice. And, and they don't even know that they're frozen.
So. Bar, barking dogs. There's all kinds of options why it doesn't. And, and make no mistake, I believe. Uh, like I think everyone else at this table does, is that participation should be in person. My, my reasoning for bringing this forward, uh, Counselor Cameron sort of took it in a little different direction. Mine is to try to get us through, through Omicron. Through small business closures. I don't want to see Connor Cleary come in here or have to make a choice between coming in here and going to work the next day. I don't want to see Cody Outway come in here and have to make a choice where he has to choose between coming to a committee meeting. And possibly taking home something from that committee meeting in person to his two children. Or to the fire hall when he goes to do that, when he has the opportunity, if he chooses to contribute electronically until the pandemic. So. I don't want to contribute. I don't think you should be able to contribute electronically. Outside of the pandemic. That's not what I asked for it to be brought forward for. I asked for it to be brought forward to get us through this mess that we're in now. And to get us through until whenever we're done this pandemic. I, I certainly don't want to put Mark Packwood's life at risk by having to choose between if he wants to contribute at a committee level or, or not. Um, it, it's not about sitting here in a screen freezing or something like that. It's about making a choice of whether he wants to come into this room. And, and sit in. I just don't think, I think having that one layer of protection for him. Uh, uh, on our part as leaders is the least we can give him.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Counselor Cameron. Now, is there any other speakers after Counselor Cameron? After, if there's no other speakers, I'm going to make a suggestion as to how we might terminate, wind up this discussion. I'll make a suggestion, uh, after I hear Counselor Cam, Counselor.
Thank you. Uh, the only, the only. The only stipulation I have is. If there is a medic, we'll say a medical emergency such as Mr. McCauley. Why should Mr. McCauley? Why shouldn't Mr. McCauley be able to contribute to, to, to the, to the meetings? He, the man's had a heart attack for goodness sakes.
Maybe that's the reason that he shouldn't be contributing.
Well, that's up for him to decide.
That's, yeah.
He looked, he looked pretty.
Anyway, anyway.
And, and, and to point it out, Mr. Counselor Cameron is he wouldn't be able to, to con- contribute. Without breaking by law.
That is correct. That, that's crap. That's, that, that, that's why, that's why we need.
Okay.
That in there for that. And, and I don't know who it is. Maybe it's Mr. Mayor that you have to make the distinction. Just because you stayed home for, uh, snow, you better get in here. I, I don't know. I, I don't know where the, where the policing of, well, of this sandwich.
I'm going to make a suggestion here. Um, and I, I draw your attention to page thirty seven and fifty one. And specifically I draw your attention to the last paragraph on page. And, and take your red pencil and please make the following suggested changes to that paragraph. In front of the word council, put the word that. And then strike out the words may wish to consider. And now change the word amending to amend. Now it will read as follows, that council amend the procedural bylaw. To reinstate and permit electronic participation. For a sixth month period to end August the thirty first, twenty twenty one. I guess it would be July thirty first, twenty twenty one. We'll pass.
Twenty twenty two, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're right. If, if this, if this suggested recommendation passes tonight, it would be. Implemented, um, on the, at the end of January, the seven month period would end on July thirty first, twenty twenty two. Is that a mechanism that we would want to consider?
I'm very comfortable with that as the person who brought it forward for discussion. I do, it's lots long enough for me.
See a nodding of heads. Chair's looking for a mover in a second. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have it moved by Deputy Mayor Deshaun and seconded by Counselor Dillabaw. Now, uh, to the clerk and the C O. Uh, to the clerk and the C O before I call the question. Have you got the wording of that recommendation? By the way, all, all the re- the remainder of that paragraph should disappear. Have you got, to the clerk?
Through the chair, yes, I do have the wording and I will bring that forward for the council.
Okay, to the C O.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on the recommendation. Those in favor?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
That gets us six months.
That gets us six months.
Thank you.
And then it expires again. Okay, now I'm at, uh, item number, uh. Seven A, which is council response to the twenty twenty one audit questionnaire. The draft response is there. We've had an opportunity to read it. Uh, I haven't yet signed it. Are there any questions or suggestions? To, uh, to this, this is council answering the audit questions. The questions from the auditor as received in the letter of November the twenty second.
I'm comfortable with what's written.
Any, any discussion? No?
I'm happy to do.
Okay, okay. I'm going to take that as guidance and I'm going to sign this letter and get it out of here tomorrow or the next day. Okay, oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
If, if, if I may, on page forty one, there's, there's a recommendation.
Oh, sure there is. Recommend the council authorize the mayor to sign. Uh, need a mover in a second.
All of them.
I have Counselor Hunter moving and Counselor Cameron second. Those in favor? Uh, motion is carried. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. C O. Pass that by. All right. That's, that's, that's my glasses.
There, there, there you go.
Uh, number seven B is the vaccination policy update. This should be an interesting discussion. And, uh, Mr. C O, I'm going to let you talk to this. I mean, I have seen these policies all over the place.
Over to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as, uh. As, as committee is aware that we, we, we passed the, the original vaccination policy, uh, end of, uh, end, end of September. And, uh, there, there have been a couple, a couple of items that, uh, basically have arisen. And I think I would characterize them as, uh, that, that just require, um. Some clarity or potential, uh, consideration by, uh, by committee and council. And the first is with respect to, um, the vaccination requirement. So. No, no doubt that the policy is clear with respect to the township position on, uh. Strongly recommending and encouraging a, all employees to become vaccinated. What, what I would say is, is not fully clear is whether, uh, being fully vaccinated is a requirement to remain in the workplace. And if that is the intent, then, uh, the policy, uh, it needs to be modified. So that, that, that is certainly item number one. And, uh, I, the second item. With respect to that is the testing protocol for those that are either non-vaccinated or partially vaccinated. As it, as it stands right now, uh, if there is an individual that is non-vaccinated or partially vaccinated. And is required to, uh, complete that testing protocol, uh, the cost of that testing, uh, is, is borne with the, uh, with, with the individual. And not paid for by the township. And I, I've sort of outlined, uh, the, uh, the, the position and the stance that, uh, that the organization has. Has taken to this, uh, uh, point. Uh, we, we have received a, a policy grievance, uh, from, from, from the union. With the, with an opposing position. And one of the items that I indicated is that I would, uh. Seek some, some, some clarity with respect to the, uh, to, to the organization, uh, position. To, to ensure that I was, um, uh, reading the, the, the intent correctly. But also to reconsider, uh, the, the testing in the, in, in the wave of this Omicron, uh, variant. And, uh, that, uh, the, the, the testing regime may need to be, uh, extended beyond. Uh, those that, uh, are, uh, unvaccinated or partially vaccinated. So those are sort of the, uh, uh, the two main areas. Provided, uh, an alternative with respect to if, if, if there is that willingness to, uh. A desire from, from a council level to, to mandate that vaccination, it could be done, uh, with respect to that. Uh, the, the, the recommendation though is that, uh, that the policy be amended to require. A daily workplace testing for non-vaccinated employees. And that the employer would cover the cost as, uh, as it is right now. Our cost to, to, to obtain the rapid testing is substantially, uh, lower than, than, than the individual. So, um, that provides a brief, uh, uh, overview. And, uh, certainly be, uh, willing to, to, to answer any, uh, questions before, uh, the. Discussion begins.
Okay, questions to Mr. Grant?
Hey, Counselor.
I don't have any questions. I just have a statement. You know, the operating department has been mandated that the department have to be vaccinated to remain at work. I think we've got to be very same with the township. I'm sorry. Thirty some out there that are mandated to have, had to be vaccinated, I think it was by today. Yeah, work, I'm paid.
Uh, through, through, through the chair, it is my understanding that it, it, it is around this time.
I think we have to be. We can't take one half of township, the other half of township. Parents paying for the test once a day to set us one way or the other before we vaccinated further because I think that's missing in the. Bylaw right now is to exactly when they had to be vaccinated by.
So through, uh, through the, uh, through, through the chair, as of, as of right now, our current policy does not indicate that it's sort of, uh, a, a. A specific date of required for to be fully vaccinated.
Yeah, and that's because though we're taking the position strongly recommended, encouraged, we're not taking a line in the sand.
That, 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 that is correct.
I mean, I, I, I think we need to have some discussion around whether we're strongly recommending or requiring.
I never really think they have much choice unless you want to hang the port general manager. Administration of party. Right. Arbitration here is. Operation, you're not mandated, other part of the air mandate.
Uh, who else wants in here? I hope Counselor Cameron, anybody else after Counselor Cameron? Go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I strongly, uh, agree with Counselor Hunter that. If you're working for the township, you should be, you should be vaccinated. If you're not vaccinated. You should pay for your own, you should pay for your own testing.
That's a, uh, that's a requires vaccination.
Now, what I'm saying there too, which I didn't say, but what I am saying is if you do become vaccinated. If you need to be tested, then I think yes, as a, as a corporation, I think that would be the nice thing to do. Uh, Mr. Mayor, when I read this, I, I did a little bit of research and there's very few companies around that are paying the full shot. For, for testing. There are some that do, but there are quite a few that do not. I think if you're fully vaccinated and need a test, then I, I agree that, uh. Perhaps we'll pay for it.
Okay, so there's three issues on the table here right now. I'm going to separate the three issues and we're going to deal with the three issues separately. The three issues are. Are we strongly recommending? Or are we requiring vaccination? That's issue number one. The second issue is around who pays for the testing. And that issue splits twice. If you're vaccinated and if you're not vaccinated. So those are the three issues that are on the table. Let's deal with just the specific issue of. Where do we stand as a council? As a township. Are we strongly recommending that all staff be vaccinated? Or are we requiring that all staff be vaccinated? I need to hear from everybody on that specific issue.
What is the majority of the townships' policies with regards to this? That, we're aware of, are, are we aware of that?
What is, what is the question?
I guess my question is what is the majority of the townships in Ontario doing?
But there's, there's four hundred and forty-four municipalities. We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't have that answer.
I'll take this answer.
Uh, okay, but I want, I, I want to, I want everyone to address that specific issue.
That's what, that's what all it is. I don't think, um, anyone should, should lose their right to work. Because they chose not to be vaccinated. So for me, the strong wording that, uh, we recommend. That all employees be vaccinated, um, would be how I would prefer. I would, I don't want. The word required to be vaccinated, to be there for me. Um, and, and secondly. I don't know how it relates back to our, our policy as far as testing goes, but under the health unit and. Health unit guidelines right, right now, the only need. You only need to be like five days, ten days, if you're unvaccinated. There's no need to be tested before you become work.
We, we got to decide on the basic issue first. And everything falls.
We divided it into three things.
Yeah, but I said, let's deal with the specific issue first.
And you did. Okay, so then you're in favor of, you're in favor of strongly recommend. Yeah, I'll come back.
Okay, strongly recommend. That's, that's.
The way that it's.
Deshaun, yeah. Who else is strongly recommend? Okay, and that's Mr. Rainville. Counselor Hunter, where are you?
I'm where I'm.
And I got you for requires.
Yeah.
Counselor Hunter is requires. Counselor Cameron, where are you?
Requires.
Sorry, correction. That's required.
They pardon?
That's correction. That's required, not recommend. I require, I require.
Okay, so you're under required, not strongly recommend.
Yes, as a member of our fire department, we are all, uh, mandatory.
Right, okay.
Vaccination. I believe that that's the right way.
Oh, okay, all right. Counselor Dillabaw.
We currently be vaccinated.
Requires?
Out or related, yeah.
Okay, so you're. Okay, so you're making the exception of health or religion. Okay, now, so, so this breaks down to strongly recommend is they a deputy mayor, and then requires is Hunter, Cameron, Rainville, Dillabon, and I'm gonna stay out of this one for now. Well, I I was gonna stay out of it because I felt it was pretty one-sided. But now it's even more one-sided, I'll go with requires, and the reason I'll go with requires is because the port set requires. Well, but now there's a whole bunch of other things that fall into place here. So now we have to revise our policy so that we're now requiring all staff to become vaccinated. Now, the next thing is that we have to set a date. By what date? By what date? And then the next thing is, what happens if you don't meet the requirement? So how much time do you give staff to meet the requirement? Thirty days, sixty days?
The end of the month?
You tell me.
No, really, change to the CEO, how many people that we have on staff that's not vaccinated as of January tenth, twenty twenty-two?
So, uh we 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 have very few.
What is very few?
I would, I I would, I would say we are, we 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 are talking to.
Two out of how many of our staff? Two that, two that doesn't have it, and how, what's our total staff?
Well, I I I'm also taking into consideration the 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 fire department, etc., so I I would say three.
Sorry?
Three.
No, no, what's our total staff dose, twenty-five?
You've got your compliment, you've got eighty staff.
Eighty staff, okay. So we've got two that doesn't have it, that is eight.
Three.
Okay, three out of eight.
That's very easy for me, January thirty-first.
Yeah, the problem is you can't get two doses with that fast.
Yeah, correct, so you're 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 looking at eight weeks in between.
Yeah, so two months?
Yeah, well, e- even if you went to March.
Thirty-first? Meet the standards? Of two shots?
March thirty-first?
Yeah.
How many would go along with March thirty-first? Let me just see a show of hands.
Would that get it legally?
Well, i- i- it it means that if they book a do- if they book, if they started booking when the policy is passed, and the policy won't get passed until the end of January. Oh, oh, I don't know. Uh well, I mean, this this policy has has the weight of council behind it. It's a it's a council policy, is it not, Mr. Grant? Yeah, it's a council policy, yeah. So that can only be amended by council.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so the council, it's not gonna be amended until the the council meeting at the end of the month. So that would give sixty days from the end of the month. Now, Mr. Grant can signal to his staff that council has had a change of thinking uh because of COVID nineteen and because of uh Omicron, council's had a change of thinking. They're now mandating it, and so get yourself booked. He, so they can ha- use the period between now and the time the policy gets changed to actually begin the process. So, how how many would go along with the date of March the thirty-first? I need to see a show of hands.
Okay, question would be, my question would be, for that date in March thirty-first, what happens if if and first I want to point out before I have any more of this conversation, I am triple vaccinated. I want everybody thinking of an anti-vaxxer. What's the, what's the repercussion if I don't get vaccinated by March third? So are we, are we talking about constructive dismissal? Like, what's the?
Okay, so that's the next issue. That's the next issue, but I think it's a separate issue from the date, because we have to decide what the repercussion is.
And and one other question that I have before we go any further as well is, we're changing the wording in our our policy to reflect that of of the port. And just so that my brain's clear here, at our port meeting, the port used the township's recommendation. So, they must have changed that in in the the port wording at some point then as well to to make it different than ours, because my recollection of that meeting was that they were using the township's template. Am I correct in thinking that?
No, I don't think they were using the township's template. I think that, I think that two processes started at about the same time, but the general manager, as the general manager instituted a policy, and it's a port policy. I don't think that the port policy has the weight of council behind it. I think it's a port policy, although I can be corrected on that. It's the manag- is it the management committee that approved that policy? I think, was it or wasn't, we can't.
Many, many approved it, but we all got an email from the port general man- manager back in December that he
He had changed.
Revised to mandate.
Right.
Right, but it's not what we agreed to, is that's where I'm going. With with it as a port committee, we agreed to with being the same as what the townships was, and then has amended it since then.
Yeah, but we're aware.
We're, we're.
And I never voted, we never voted for it.
It came into effect January tenth, I do believe.
Uh no, no, January the tenth, no, no, January the tenth was the date by which if you hadn't had all your vaccinations, then the testing regime would start.
Right.
Uh and and that, I think that's, I I don't know where that is right now.
Certain date.
We're 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 a bit, I'm gonna tell you, we're a little bit off-footed on this one, because the port is 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 uh I, how shall I say this? The the port is the, the port management committee is aware of what's happening, but they have not actually approved the policy. At this point, I think it's a general manager's policy. But again, that's an operating entity. Now, this is an operating entity too, but it's a different kind of operating entity. Same as the fire department is a department of the township, but they have their own policy in place, right?
Is this a port incorporated in its own right?
No, no, it's a division of CEO.
So, tha- tha- thank you, Mr. Just to be clear, that tha- tha- that the fire department is wobbling under the township policy.
Okay, but hang on now. A minute ago, Mr. Rainville said that the fire department had mandated vaccinations.
The the same policy applies to the fire department.
Same policy.
That is correct. It 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 is not mandated as of now.
Okay, so that was fault, wrong information that we put on the table there. Because you said the fire department had mandated vaccinations.
I'm not, I'm not. My intention was not to say it with that respect. My intention was to say is that I cannot operate as a firefighter for our counties or our township's fire department unless I am vaccinated.
Who says you can't? Beg your pardon?
Our fire chief.
Now, Mr. Grant, we're getting conflicting ideas here.
If I not, it's correct.
So what, so so the same process that went for our full-time employees was extended to the fire department. So, we wanted to 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 know the vaccination status of of the members.
That's not, that's not the issue.
Well, so, so, so first and foremost, if I i- i- if I indicated that it is the same policy, we we know that the policy is right here in front of us, and it does not indicate mandate.
Okay, so, we we've got some misunderstandings here.
They refuse my term. All I know is I'm a firefighter and I was asked to make sure that I was vaccinated, and I was encouraged and helped along to get that process up.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Whatever that applies to.
Okay, that's not mandatory.
I use the wrong words.
Okay, well, that's.
So, I I I would, I I would certainly say that it was strongly recommended and encouraged.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. And so now we understand.
Yeah.
Okay, we understand where the misunderstandings came from. All right, now, so, uh we're at the issue of, this is a township policy. It has the weight of council. It's a council policy. And we've, we've come to the conclusion, as I read the table, that we would require, that's mandate, all staff to be vaccinated. And we're discussing by what date. The date is March, the the suggested date is March the thirty-first. Or after we come to the date, then the question is, or what are the repercussions? All right, now, is March the thirty-first a a a a reasonable date, counselor?
I think March thirty-first is a reasonable date. I'd just like to say that March thirty-first should be fully vaccinated or have their shots booked, they totally vaccinated.
Okay, well.
By that date.
Okay, well, that can be included in the definitions and the tha- tha- okay, so you're basically a March thirty-first. Okay, with that sort of caveat.
And how do we know it's booked?
Show me your appointment.
They can show you the appointment.
And how do you know that they followed up with it afterwards?
Well, that's questionable. That's management's responsibility. Okay, now, what are the repercussions if you don't meet that standard by March the thirty-first? Most places, it's you're on leave without pay unless you agree to be tested weekly or daily or with something.
At their expense.
Well, that's again the another issue. We could pay for it if we want to.
Well, I think somewhere in this, in this bylaw, the vaccination policy, I think it does say somewhere that it's strongly recommended, which is gonna be changed to required. But I also think that it mentioned somewhere that the wording is something like up to and including dismissal. And I think the wording sent home or remain at home without pay was one of the other stipulations. I'm just.
So, most places, it's at home without pay.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a minute, counselor. Uh uh I'm trying to get deputy mayor in here.
So, yeah, thanks. So, so the port general manager changed this policy uh from advice, I believe, in the email that was sent was was because they had legal look at it. If that's been done, and they use this policy to begin with, why aren't we just going with what their legal recommendation was on the port one to make it congruent with that? Then this discussion's follow the same principle that they follow when we're we're not debating three words or four words on a law.
Well, it's, uh the way I look at it is two different entities. Mr. Grant may have different priorities for his staff than Mr. Dally has for his. Uh I I I, each each of these gentlemen has a major responsibility to run their organizations. Mr. Grant may feel that he can't, he can't afford to have his treasurer uh on leave without pay. He may feel that he's gotta find a way to accommodate her. Mr. Dally, on the other hand, may feel that if his, if his operations manager ain't prepared to get vaccinated, he's on leave without pay, we'll do without him. That's two different managers with two different sets of responsibilities, trying to work their system.
So can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, so then through the chair to the CEO, um do we need to change this policy to reflect um mandating uh this, or is the status quo working?
So, uh through 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 the chair, uh in 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 all fairness, uh my 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 rule is to implement the policy, not to set the policy. I I am providing some uh two two alternatives, a- a- and I think that uh at this particular time, uh the the recommendation that I'm bringing forward is it is to move to daily testing for those that are uh vaccinated. And 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 I'll agree with it, you know, with the alternative, a brief, you know, if if committee in in council is uh of the mindset to to make it a requirement, i.e. mandated, then uh it 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 can be adjusted to be similar to the uh to 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 the board.
And 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 to go back to staff, you can't, you can't say is it working? Because you got three of eighty that are not vaccinated and the grievance in front of you. So obviously, there's a problem there.
Just one point to Mr. Mayor, and we used the word the treasurer uh earlier in in this and suggested that our treasurer isn't uh vaccinated, and I think that's a dangerous thing to do. Um maybe we should just keep it as as any employee that that works for us, not signaling out.
Fair comment.
I don't want her vaccination status questioned.
Fair comment. Just trying to pick, keep, keep people, keep positions. Keep positions. Okay, so now the chair is left with, what are the repercussions? You're saying that the repercussions that are built into this policy should be similar to the repercussions that are built into the port polls. Is that what I'm hearing?
For me, I I I would keep them congruent.
All right, so. Okay, so if that's the, if that's the consensus, then I think we can end this discussion now, and Mr. Grant can make the necessary changes to bring the the revised policy back to the council meeting at the end of the month. And we'll do the revision at the end of the month.
Have we just, have we, have we put to bed the issue of who's paying for this?
It'll be commensurate with the board.
All right.
Congruent with, same as.
What is that?
So, so.
I don't know.
Well, I think I I I think through the through through the chair, uh a- at this time, uh I I I do not believe that uh I believe the board is i- i- is covering that testing.
That's because they have a whole load of tests.
No, 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 wait, wait a second. They're they're testing for people. They're testing people who are vaccinated that are showing positivity signs. That's who they're testing.
So, through through the chair, my 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 understanding was that they uh they 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 sent tests home with every uh uh port employee with respect to testing.
No. Did you get that? First of all, is that a fact? And did you get that fact from Mr. Dell?
So, I I I I did, I I I indicate that my understanding was that that was what was done, and I believe that was uh from the email from the port manager.
Okay, my understanding is different, because I, I mean, I was told that he managed to get three boxes, I think swan, twenty-five to a box seventy-five, and that they were ho- holding them uh for management use. I, but I, but that's fuzzy in my head. I have a different understanding, is what I'm saying.
Well, we're talking about testing three people, right? Ultimately, the rest of the people are vaccinated, so the only people that this policy would go towards are people who are not vaccinated, right? So we're talking about three people for however many weeks. I mean, that's not a lot of tests.
Every day?
Port had it twice a week.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's if they weren't vaccinated.
Right.
Yeah.
Did they pay to?
Yeah, by that, if they weren't vaccinated by that date.
That's right.
Then they had to show tests twice a week.
Right.
At their own expense or at port expense?
On port, port was gonna take it.
Or the port was gonna pay it.
With those.
With those rapid antigen tests.
Yeah, and the reason why he went through all this is because the federal, the port is regulated through the federal government, the marine grain operations, that's why he had to change our bylaw.
Yeah, that's, yes.
I got it here on the port.
They're not federal employees.
On November seventh.
No, no, no.
No, no, they're, they go under the federal government uh for both marine and grain operations.
See, so that's a reason that we don't necessarily have to be congruent with them, because we're certainly not a federally regulated entity. We fall totally and completely under the provincial regime. Anyway, go ahead.
I don't have any trouble trouble paying with the, for the vaccinations up until the eighth, but they have to be fully vaccinated. But they have to be fully vaccinated.
After that.
After that, they have to. Until they meet the required, required requirements. That if they have a booking, if they haven't accomplished it by then. They have to pay, but if they still insist on not doing any shots or any bookings.
They're on.
On leave.
On leave without pay?
Yeah.
On their own. Okay, so I think, Mr. Grant, we better have another draft, uh, at the PW meeting next week. Because there's a, a multitude of issues here that we're grappling with.
Okay, right. I continue us paying for the, for that, that date, but ones, I guess, are hard to get. That some of them, even if they want, they, they can't, couldn't get it over.
If they're not delivering.
Well, here's, here's the fact that, that was given to me. An individual employee has to pay forty dollars to get a test. We can buy a box of rapid antigen tests for fourteen dollars through Shoppers Drug Mart if they're in stock. So we buy a box of twenty-five for fourteen dollars, individual pays forty. And an individual cannot access a box of rapid antigen tests through Shoppers Drug Mart. They will only sell to businesses, township municipalities, incorporated entities, small businesses, they're called. So I, I think, uh, you were able to now, uh, access some through Shoppers Drug Mart for municipal use, right?
Through, through, through the provincial program.
Through the provincial program.
Well, I think if the provincial program knew that someone's charging you forty bucks, they'd get their hands slapped.
Uh, now, I, I listen, I don't want to get into that.
I don't know.
Wow, I know they tried that at the, at the. The seniors home in Temple.
And got slapped.
And, well, yeah, because the, the daughter went in, who takes care of her mother, sees her every day, and they said, you have to have a rapid test, it's forty bucks a year. She said, you're not charging me forty bucks. I got them up here for fourteen. And then that was off. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so I think, I think what we can do is we can suspend this discussion. Mr. Grant has heard the discussion, he understands the issues. Uh, perhaps better than I do, and I'm sure better than I do, and, uh, you know. The, the, I, I, I have. The only thing I can say is this, for both Mr. Grant and Mr. Dally. Working their way through this quagmire. Is taking a lot of time and effort and understanding, and I appreciate the sensitivity. With which both of them are approaching their staff and their staff responsibilities, their responsibility to staff. The staff responsibility to the organization. It's a thin line that they're walking, and I congratulate both of them for, for the manner in which they're handling this issue. And hopefully, you know, by March the thirty-first, this will all be behind us, and I appreciate council's. Uh, forbearance in, in looking towards that date, because I think it gives all of us time to. Get some time behind us. So I'm about to wind up that discussion and move on with the agenda. Yes.
Sure. Can, can I hit the general sense, if, if I'm reading the table correct, that, uh. That the employer will, will, will cover the cost of that rapid test in the, in, in the interim period?
I think you got that.
Yeah, 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 up to this, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion there?
Okay, just a quick question, I hope it is, um, how do we verify that these tests that are performed by individuals are in fact. Performed by themselves? Like, you're sending somebody home with a rapid test for a work purpose, and you're expecting them to hopefully. Honestly return that test with the right response. I don't want to open a can of worms with.
That's, that's not the way it's being handled at the port. Port. If, if the port suspects that, that an individual is showing symptoms. They do the test right there.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I think there was one situation where an individual acquired one of these tests from outside the organization through another source. And, uh, explain, uh, I, I think either, um, tested positive or said they tested positive, and I'm not sure how the port dealt with it. Which is just a general question.
Yeah, and through, 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 Joe, I, I'll just specify that we, 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 we do have a procedure in place with respect to that.
There, there you go.
To, to ensure that it is the individual.
All right, uh, so I'm moving on to item number eight, which is council inquiries, notices, a motion. Does anyone have an inquiry or notice of motion?
Not here.
None there. Okay, so now I'm on to the mayor's report. And so as part of the mayor's report, I just want to report from our earlier council meeting. That I think tonight the council has approved the purchase of the former Prescott, uh, welding. And machine shop property, uh, on County Road Two in Johnstown. Uh, and the last thing that I want to report is just this, uh, which is a letter that has come to Mr. Grant. Over the signature of the president of the, uh, Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators. Of which I take Mr. Grant to be a member of that association. And the letter is addressed to Dear Dave. And, uh, he says, and I'm not gonna read the entire letter, just three paragraphs. As a valued member of the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership during the pandemic. Communities across our country have experienced a non-precedent challenge. And over the past two years, dealing with the COVID nineteen pandemic. The required dedication, hard work, creativity, and unwavering spirit from us all. Behind the scenes is required an intense amount of coordination. As CAO, we know the amount of effort and ingenuity has taken for you to lead your staff throughout the pandemic. The strength of your municipal team directly impacted your residents in the most important and fundamental ways. You have guided your staff through a long and stressful period when you yourself have been under tremendous pressure. You played a critical role in your community's success. Your leadership has not gone unnoticed. Please know how proud we are of your efforts. Unfortunately, there is no end in sight, and we will continue to be relied upon to provide leadership to our communities to the best of our ability. And I know you will have continued success in helping your staff and citizens get through this very difficult time in our history. And then he wishes all the best to you and your team as we look forward to twenty twenty-two, and I wanted to share that with council. Because it certainly, uh, portrays my sentiments, and I'm sure the sentiments of council. And again, thank you, Mr. Grant, and best wishes getting through the rest of this mess.
And a team effort and will need to continue to be.
And you do.
All hands on deck.
Okay, proceeding to item number eight, uh, ten, there's nobody in the gallery on the Zoom. And, uh, nobody here in the council chambers for the question period. There is no closed session. The chair is looking for the motion to adjourn. I have Counselor, our Deputy Mayor Deshaun moving, Counselor Cameron seconding those in favor.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.